Public schools and visions a community where all students will become resilient, adaptable, passionate, confident, curious learners in an evolving and diverse world. And that's certainly true over the last couple of years because they've had to be resilient and evolve through all the changes that have happened in the last couple of years. It was nice to see everybody back today with their masks on, without their mask. It was really nice to see this today. Next slide. Okay, and I'm not going to read these, but these are our core values. Specifically, we have four goals: rigorous, relevant, engaging curriculum, personalized, ongoing professional learning, support staff and students in wellness programs, and then continue to improve a sense of strong sense of community through communication and collaboration in a shared vision. So those are just the preliminary pages. Move on to next. Okay, and there's four things that happen with a budget development process. Looking at the district improvement plan, which I just showed you, looking at school improvement plans, so each district has the overarching plan, and then each school has its own improvement plan. And those improvement plans include curriculum work, professional development, looking at, you know, staffing and such. So those are the things that are taken into place with your school improvement. Then you look at your state and federal mandates. For example, do we have enough resources for social emotional learning? Do we have enough staffing to support students in other areas in special needs and things like as well as that? And then what are we going to do to grow and develop some of the programs we have? So those are the four considerations you have when building a budget. It's like a puzzle piece. So specifically, there are two types of budgets. One is called a zero-based budget, a zero-based budget where you start from the bottom up and you do line by line, or you do a needs-based budget. Most school departments use a needs-based budget that reflects the needs and priorities identified by the administration and faculty. And then it's based on the current information that we have moving forward. And then we look at, do we have any things that we need to rectify from previous years through budgetary cuts or other things that might have happened? So those are some things that helps with a needs-based budget. When we started our budget process, we started it maybe in November or so, maybe November, December, we talked to the administration. And as the admin team, each principal and program director got together, we looked at their budgets, and they got together with their departments, the grade level teams, and worked with their staff to create a budget to reflect what their needs were for the school. And then they were present with me, we talked about what they needed. This includes technology, building and property, I'm building a property, building and grounds. So we sat together and we worked their budgets together. And then I put all those budgets together to create what you're going to see next. This is our whole budgetary process. Before we get going, I do want you to understand that, you know, we are required by the state to have a net school spending, which is N S S, or an actual school spending. So I just want to explain this a little bit for you. When net school spending is something that every school is required to have when they start the school year. So that is a combination of what you get from the state, which is called Chapter 70 money, and then the other budget money would come from your towns and the distribution and the contribution that they have to provide. So net school requirement is a legal obligation for each district, and that has to be met. If it is not met, the district and the towns can be penalized monetarily. So you have to make sure that you maintain your net school spending for the district. It's a little tricky, though, because your actual school spending is a little different because net school spending includes other things like the operating expenses, interest costs, insurance, maintenance, administration, and it doesn't include grants and capital spending. So those are specific things that happen when you do a budget. I don't think a lot of people understand that when you do your budget, insurance is a big portion of that. So that's what you to be aware of it. So the budget you're going to see is what is based on that. Next. Okay, so these are some of the revenues we have to keep our budget contained. So we have Chapter 70 funds, which is, you know, that's based on how many students we have and what are the needs of our students. Federal and state and grant entitlements, some of them we have are Title I, I D A, Title III, 2A, and then other ones to support staff programs, Title 2A, Title IV, and then we have a small rural school grant. And there also was a student opportunity act grant. I'm not sure they're going to move that forward anymore, you know, keep our fingers crossed, that might help us in the future moving forward. And then we have our local contributions, which really are property, taxes, and business taxes. So depending on what you have for revenue, that is another revenue stream that you use. And then we do have grants, competitive grants, and then federal and pandemic aid funds. Unfortunately, we haven't heard anything new. We have S R 3, which is our latest grant, and that goes for two years, and I've used a big chunk of it when you see the budget for the next couple of years to supplement what we have. But, you know, I don't know what else we'll have if there'll be an S R 3, don't know, but right now that's what we have. Okay, so I just want to give you a little bit of idea of what our budget request is. I'm asking, the budget request this year, when I did the budget came to be $8 million, eight million one hundred sixty, two hundred fifty thousand dollars and forty cents. Now, transportation is not included in your net school spending for budgets. However, Northbrook Field School has always included that in their transportation budget. The town is really obligated to pay that. It should be in your school budget, but since it's been done that way traditionally, I added it. So you're not going to see a subtraction for that. I just kept, I kept it in it because I already developed it within the budget. So again, transportation is not necessarily part of the net school spending, but it's been done that way, so we're going to continue to follow that process. So we're required by the state to have this much, seven million dollars, seven million, seven hundred eighty-nine, one hundred seventy-three thousand dollars to make sure you can function and have your schools run. Of that, four million, seven hundred thousand and some change is what you'll be getting from the state, and so the town is required to pay this additional three hundred thousand, three million dollars. And don't forget, some of it has to come out of insurance and so those types of things. So basically, you know, we're only looking to spend about three hundred seventy-one thousand dollars over what the state is asking us to pay this year. So that's for the state revenue. Next slide. And then we talked a little about, see, there's some of the expenses that are going to come out of the actual spending. This is the insurance, this is our, you know, tuition for out-of-district placements, some of the administrative retirement leaves, other retirement, insurance, you know, so this is what we pay for the town, for the actual net school spending. So this money will come out of your net school spending in the future. Okay. Next slide. Talk a little about the enrollment trends. You can see from 2014 to now, we have gone down about eighteen percent of students. It's gone about eighteen percent. So obviously, our Chapter 70 money is going to continue to be reduced as a result of that. This year, we're at four forty-nine. We did have few students coming back once the mask mandate was lifted, and hopefully we'll start to see more of that trend happen. But again, if new students come in, we won't see that money till the following year because they're not counted till this, till next October. So, you know, we'll have to have some discussions on there moving forward. Chapter 78, as you can see, that has also kind of fluctuated because what ends up happening is they're adjusting for inflation a little bit. So it's pretty much stayed steady, but we haven't gotten an increase in the last couple of years. But I mean, it has gone up, but very insignificant, you know, in the course of almost ten years. So three, you know, three hundred thousand or so, a hundred thousand or so, yeah, three hundred thousand. Okay. So basically, this is the budget for the last couple of years, and you can see that, you know, they've been trying to be fiscally prudent while maintaining the, you know, net school spending. I also put in this year, on top of our budgetary reduction of our balance, we had to reduce an additional three percent, which ended up being a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. My numbers are right, I didn't double check that once. But we did have to reduce a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars in November. Okay, these are some of the grants. So when moving forward with the budget, I will use some of this money, this three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, to supplement some of the funding streams for staffing, professional development, supplies, materials, things like that, so that we're able to really maintain some of our programs. At this point, we're not really developing anything, but we're at least maintaining what we have, and that's what we're looking to do at this point. Next slide. These are some monies we're going to be using in our revolving accounts moving forward. Circuit breaker, which is special ed money, we'll be using that. We do have some savings in school choice reimbursement, although this money is going to be going down, we're down to one hundred ninety-eight thousand next year, so we've lost two hundred fifty-eight thousand in school choice this year. And some of the other money, we'll be using athletics, stabilization, preschool, and facilities. We're using some of this money to offset additional funding in the budget. Next. So this is just an idea of what specifically each department has requested and how we're going to offset some of that funding. You can see the differences. For the most part, you know, they're not outrageous. The biggest jump we're going to see is for building and grounds. They went up, you know, quite a bit because they are concerned with, it was seven hundred, so almost eighty-eight thousand dollars. Marty is very concerned with the cost of fuel oil. He put in a significant amount, but with what's happening right now, he can't even say that's going to be enough at this point. So we're really going to have to monitor that very closely. He's trying to put the oil and order it now before it gets out of whack. So, you know, that is a bit different. And then some of the special ed costs, those go up quite a bit every year. So those are some other things we'll see. But for the most, we tried to keep everything in a status quo type thing. Technology went down, and you can see that because last couple of years, we had to buy technology to support the students with remote learning. So that has gone down a little bit, so we did have quite a bit of savings there, but most of that money was grant-based money anyway, but I wanted to put it in there. Okay, another next one. So this is breakdown by department. You can see the vast majority of our budget goes to staffing, pupil services, high school. This is mostly staffing. A little bit goes to transportation, very little bit goes to technology. Athletics is under one percent, central office is about two percent, and then curriculum is less than, less than half. So, you know, our budget really is pretty even divided between the three staffing positions and everything else is tertiary. As I said, transportation has gone up, you can see every year, so about three point six percent. However, special ed tends to be something we have to contend with on a regular basis because some students, their needs change frequently. We might have somebody who's out, needs to go out in the middle of the year, and we have to add additional funding in for that. So that's where the circuit breaker money comes in and things like that. So that's where some of that money will offset some of these fundings. Okay, so again, building and grounds, we put in a 10% increase, but again, we don't know what that's going to look like, but right now, that's what he's been told. We did get a nice, steady quote from the French River, that's who we do with the consortium, so we did group with that, but it still was very high, but it was easier to do with that group instead of doing it on the road. So it would have been probably seventeen, nineteen percent if we tried to do it on ourselves. But we do belong to the French River, so, and I've been participating in that, so that's where we are. Special education, about a 12% estimate. We actually have no control over special ed. They could call up Anna tomorrow and say, I'm moving up our three percent in the middle of the year. Nothing we can do about it. So we have to really try to stay aware of that and have money to make sure that we can support the students. Transportation, again, went up, but that's by contract. Next year, we're going to have to start negotiating another busing agreement after the end of next year. So then there'll be some contractual obligations that we're certainly going to have to have considerations moving forward, and then same thing with custodial contractual obligations. So those are things that, you know, what we have, what I have on our plate right now is based on all of these things that we don't always have all the numbers for quite yet. Next. So in summary, we are asking for a total of eight million dollars, but once we do the offsets and our net request is about six million, eight twenty-five, two fifty-five, ten. It is about six hundred fifty thousand dollars over last year, which is about a nine percent increase. We were able, I know this looks a little different, Hacomet's a little bit lower here because we had quite a bit of turnover for staff, so was able to save some money with staffing. However, it still was not, you know, enough to get it where we need to be, so I ended up taking a little bit more money out of COVID and a little bit more from school choice. So to make it a little bit more palatable, so that's kind of how that came out. But we did save some money through staffing, through quite, and there's a couple of positions we haven't filled, a couple pair of professionals that moved to A V As, and we did not fill those positions. Central office, we're down a person in there as well. So those are some things that, you know, we're looking to see if we can just try to move people in different areas to see if we can cover those without having to incur more costs. So that's what I have for this one. Bottom line, this is our budget request, nine point six percent increase from last year, which is the grand total of six million, one hundred sixty-seven, eight hundred seventy-two thousand dollars. Okay, we got the next slide. Again, the next step is we will come back in March to have a meeting and vote on the budget, and then move forward to the school, town, and then in May or June, I'm not sure when the meeting is, but then they will approve it or reject it, whatever it needs to be. So that's what's left. And does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions for you, but I believe that there's some flux between the last two lines of that grid. So I think that this, so between March and May and June, I think there may be some feedback that comes back in the town.
Sure, sure, for sure.
And we may have to make some adjustments and so forth and so whatever. But I think that you've done a tremendous job in going through, so I shouldn't do this because I shouldn't let my committee talk first, but I think you've done a tremendous job answering the call to do the reduction that you did, and then I think in the time that you had putting this budget together, so I appreciate you doing that, and so thank
Go ahead, fire, fire away.
No, I'd just like to say thank you.
I'm all set now. I didn't do this, I know.
We had someone from the town offices running the school when you first started because you basically got thrown into, whatever you call this, last ball, and I think that there's a lot of things that go on in the background that not everybody sees, and I'd just like to say thank you as well.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Any questions?
Question about the budget, questions? Check my math.
So, no, I think, I think the committee needs, you know, the next thirty days or whatever to go through the budget and look at what our current expenditures are versus what we budgeted and all of that. And, you know, we're getting it, you know, a couple of days before today too as well because in all fairness, I mean, it takes time to put this together. So I think you might find more questions next month.
Sure.
But, but I don't have any questions, I don't know if any other.
No, the only thing that I want to add, and again, I feel like a hypocrite if I didn't bring it up, the money that the district loses to private school, homeschool, and school choice is like almost 1.3 million dollars. And I think as a committee, it's important for us to come up with a plan to try to bring back some of those students. I think it's a huge revenue source for the district, and I know one of my biggest complaints last year was the school continued to ask for more money but never came up with a new plan, and I think it's important for us to start focusing on that now that Mary Jane's been here a little bit and payroll's being made in-house.
Yep.
And all the things that, you know, we've, again, you guys have got thrown into, but I think it's our responsibility to start maybe having discussions about ways to bring back some of those students so we can say that we have a different plan than in the past.
Yeah, and I think if you looked at the stuff that we're going to see in the NASDAQ report, I think there's some positive things going on from their perspective as far as their projection for us. So I agree with you. I think there's a whole gap there that we could address, but neither here nor there. I just wanted to agree with you on that. So are there any other questions that we need to adjust in this meeting?
I think that it's on us to go through and make sure we get all of our questions answered too during the next month so that hopefully the final budget approval meeting is actually less questions than we would think.
I would appreciate that, too.
Yeah, I'm sure you appreciate us to reach out to you individually and just get things sorted out so that, again, as far as keeping kids in here, the one thing we don't want to do is tell them that we have to make a whole bunch of cuts. So it's, that's part of it. The other part of it is us exploring what's in this budget, and if there's particular topics that you might feel more comfortable dealing with, then let's dig down into it a little bit so that we can address those questions as well because, you know, we have to, in the end, Mary Jane does all the hard work to put this together, and then we're the ones that sign off on this. So, you know, it's on us to make sure we know what's going on and we can answer those questions before we have a town meeting like we did last year.
And I would agree with Tim that if you have a question about it, please ask before the meeting. Not that we won't bring them up at the meeting so that the entire community can understand what our questions were, but at least let's not bring it up at the last moment and then try to find an answer because it may make it much more difficult for us to approve the budget at that point because we don't necessarily, we have not given her the opportunity to provide us with an answer that answers the questions that we have.
It's something like a sheet of questions, too.
Right, so I'm just, I'm agreeing with Tim. I think that there's an opportunity for us individually to reach out to Mary Jane and just say, hey, I don't understand this, or hey, I don't understand that, and then get an answer. But again, you're more than encouraged to bring that up at the actual open forum meeting so that the community gets an understanding of the questions that were asked, but at least then she has an opportunity to put an answer together and not get blindsided. So if there are any other questions?
Can I add one more thing? I think in that interim between the 22nd and the town meeting, we need to make sure that we avail ourselves of the, of the selectmen and the finance committee, and maybe as a committee, we can, obviously, we can't all go, but we can shuffle around and make sure we have some sort of presence and reiterate that we want to be involved in their process too, so that we can.
No, we can actually all go as long as we post the meeting, so I'm happy to do that as well. So I agree with you. I think there's a whole conversation that's happening between the school and the town, and I know Mary Beth, Mary Jane, sorry, Mary Jane has been talking to them with regard to the budget, and so let's just continue that conversation, and if there's an opportunity for us to get together as a group and have a conversation, we used to do that. It used to be the finance committee, the school committee, and the selectmen, you used to get together in a room just like this. And have a conversation about what can we do, right? So we're a part of the town, we want the town to be successful as a whole, but our responsibility is to the students and the teachers in this, in this building and the staff. And so it doesn't mean that we're not responsible for the town as well, we are. So we just want to be a good partner with them in figuring out how we do all of the things that we need to do, so. But we can't do that in a silo, we can't do that by not talking to them, we can't do that by just having these meetings and hoping that they see them on TV. Let's, let's get in the room and have a conversation. So I strongly encourage you to continue to reach out to them, and I know the selectmen are on board with doing that, so let's, let's get that done before that. I agree with you. Any other questions? If Donald accepts a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? There you go. Well, she has six thirty.
Seven minutes.
It's six thirty, we're going to call the meeting to order. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance process? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First of all, this is our recognition. I'll turn over the superman.
Sure. I, would you like me to do the recognition or do you want to do it?
I'm turning over the superman, so.
I don't have it in front of me, so. I have it right here, do you want to? Yeah, I just want, one of our school committee members, Kristi Amasta, recognized our administrative assistant in the main office, Dresden Ronald. So I'm going to have her read her, the award that she nominated for and talk a little about it, and then Dresden could not be here tonight, she does apologize, she talked to me this morning, her son had an event, and she just didn't want to miss that.
Of course.
So I think it's always important to recognize the people around us that are working hard and aren't always necessarily seen, particularly in the school. And so there was an email that asked for nominations for administrative assistants who have just gone above and beyond, and I know that personally as a parent, Dresden and Mrs. Ronald has done that. So, you know, sometimes it's that ten minutes to submit a application and even if you don't win, it's still honoring and recognizing that person and how hard they've worked because a lot of people in all fields work behind the scenes. So what I wrote was, Mrs. Dresden Ronald is a hardworking, dedicated, kind, and efficient administrative assistant. She worked hard helping all of the teachers and parents during the COVID shutdown, worked tirelessly to help provide learning materials for each and every student during the school shutdown between March and June 2020. This still brings tears to my eyes as Mrs. Ronald and her school team did everything possible to make that a positive experience for my daughter, who was then in grade two. While the school was hybrid, Mrs. Ronald led a team of efficient, organized teachers and administrators to make sure that all parents knew how to manage the awkwardness of the hybrid model. She then helped all of us when the kids could finally attend school full-time because there were always so many questions, and the person that usually has all the answers is our administrative assistant. Many times, I would email her or call on the phone, and Mrs. Ronald would know the answer and had an easy way to solve it. She also helped kept up staff morale during a rather intense budget battle where budgets were cut and then reinstated. Mrs. Ronald secretly asked students and community members to color and decorate a feather on paper and then created a ceiling-to-floor wings, like fairy wings, where our school principal was photographed to increase morale and happiness in the school. Each teacher and student could also have their photograph taken. I am also a teacher, and we, I'm also a teacher. We all know that the school administrative assistant is the necessary backbone of our school, and I did recognize Dresden Ronald wholeheartedly, and I nominated her for the
Congratulations, Dresden.
She's halfway, fortunately, but it was great. Maybe next year.
Yeah, maybe next year. You have that back there.
Yes.
Okay. Student advisory council, Joe, you're up.
Thank you. So for the past month, we've had a couple of events. We had Unity Week, which took place February 14th to the 18th. Students were encouraged to wear different colors or themes in support of various causes, including, including heart association, sorry, heart association and mental health awareness. Student council gave out buttons with encouraging quotes and colorful ribbons at lunch as a way to involve students in supporting their cause and participating in the week's events. Student council worked closely with G S A to plan and prepare for Unity Week. We also had our senior pep rally last, well, not last Friday, sorry. Friday the 19th, student council held a pep rally for our winter sport athletes and basketball seniors. We recognized the team, we recognized teams and seniors for all of our basketball teams, boys and girls for our student mostly. For upcoming events, we have M A S C conference. The M A S C conference is now being held at Worcester State from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. This conference is usually held at Hyannis for three days, but because of the pandemic, the conference location has, location and length has been changed. Spirit Week, the annual traditional spirit week is returning at M V H S. It will be held April 8th, 8th to the 14th, the week before spring break. It is, the student councils hope to extend Spirit Day, the Spirit Day competition to elementary schoolers in the Northbrook Field School system, and we will be inviting sixth grade to our lip sync event, and we have more information coming up next month.
So Joe, you said there's a conference at Worcester State?
I believe it's Worcester State.
From 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
Yes.
I didn't get a date.
I think it's the same date as Hyannis.
I don't know what that is. I don't know what that date is. That's why I asked.
I have it somewhere. I can email it to you.
No, that's fine, as long as it's in minutes.
Yeah, we can just get it.
I, I literally missed that, and I'm like, did I miss it? No, it's fine. It's, it's okay. That's great.
Just send us your information, we'll get it in a minute.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, any questions? Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of December 20th and the regular school committee meeting of January 24th? Actually, I need to do those separate. I'm sorry. Can I get a regular, uh, an approval for the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of December 20th?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from December 20th.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Can I get a motion for the school committee regular meeting minutes for January 24th?
I'm going to accept the minutes of January 24th?
Second.
Yeah, because we have to, there have to be some people who are staying, so that's all, yeah, so. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? We're on to the NESDEC report.
Yep, NESDEC is a, is an organization that, that we belong to, and every year they help us do the projections along with other school districts about the trends that are happening in education, and you can take a look at the historical data. Some of that data I actually used in my budget presentation, and you can see, there's a couple of things that they are talking about as far as demographics for the area and the whole area in general. We are not, you know, we're not, are, we're not growing, but there is, looks like it's gonna be a steady, a steady growth, so, not steady growth, but a state status quo. Do they have any questions about the report, or? I mean, there's a couple, you know, it doesn't look like the population is declining, which is good, so we just have to make sure, as, as Mr. Hickman said, she, if we can get the kids to come back here, would be, would be something that we'd like to do. But they do this for us every year, and I just wanted to share that information with you.
I think it's worth reiterating that the student population is taken in October. So students that do come back, unfortunately, doesn't help us as far as state funding for next, this coming year, but, you know, if they return to school, then that will help us in the following year.
Absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
And I'd also like to say that, you know, we're looking at, historically, 2011, you have 550 students in the, in the school population, and if nothing else changes, nothing, we do nothing to try, try to bring the population back. It looks like in 2031, which, you know, some would say it's a long way away, I'm too old to see that, but, you know, we're back over the 500 mark, we're like 510 or five, you know, yeah, 510. So, and I think this committee is dedicated, looking at opportunities to drive students back to your, to the school district versus just waiting to see what the population will do. So I think, you know, there's a little dip here, 2021, 2022, 2023, you know, we see a little bit of an incline, but, but I think that the real meat of the, of the issue is, you know, what do we do to bring our, our students back? And I think honestly, I looked at it, and I thought it was a very positive report for us, again, assuming that we do absolutely nothing to try to bring these students back, and I don't think that that's what this committee's intent is. So I think it's a very, very positive report, and, and I liked it, so. Are there any comment, any other comments? I'm sorry, I'm sure.
I'll just say that I think COVID had a lot to play with, a lot of that stuff, too. I know a lot of people made decisions based on, the last two years were definitely the biggest jump. It seems like it changes, and that was right in the middle of COVID, which I think is kind of hard to judge. But I, I don't know.
Any others?
No, that's for sure. I think that we're, as I said, even with the mask being lifted, I have, kindergarten came back in just today, so, so I think we're gonna see more of that, especially for the, for the younger students. I think parents were concerned with speech and language and, and the mask wearing, so I do think of, you know, it's, it's gonna start taking over again.
And I think we also have to acknowledge the fact that there are some parents who are concerned about the fact that we've talked about regionalizing, and so, you know, you know, I talked to a lot of people who said, you know, I want my child to be involved in sports in wherever they're gonna be, and so I want them to be there ahead of the curve versus when the curve happens or whatever. So I think that there's a lot of stuff going on. The district needs to acknowledge that, and I think we have, and I think we have as a group, but there's, there's a lot of work left to be done, and, and we're engaged in doing it, so. I know, I know it's probably gonna come up later in the conversation, but there's a meeting scheduled for Wednesday for the regionalization committee, so we're still actively involved in that conversation, but no, you know, no cast has been died, I mean, no die has been cast, I'm sorry, no die has been cast. There's no guarantee in which way we're going with this, so we're still doing the investigation work that we need to do, and we'll see where that takes us, but I think that that played a role in, in a lot of things going on, so. All right. If there are no other questions about NESDEC, then we'll move on to public participation. I see none. Moving on to presentations.
We have Margaret Hansen here. She is a teacher at the high school, and Margaret would like to talk to us about a Washington DC trip that is planned in April. So do you want me to hook up, or do you want to just talk?
No, I'll just talk. As the superintendent said, my name's Margaret Hansen. I'm a special ed parent over in the middle school, and Megan Hansen and I are actually class advisors to the class of 2025, and in 2020, we decided that we wanted to go along with the class of 2024. They were planning a DC trip, so we did get preliminary approval to join that group, and then COVID happened, so it's been postponed for two years. Coming up in April, that's our time with final approval from the school committee. We're going April 19th through the 22nd. We have 29 students that are signed up to go. It is seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. Because of our low numbers, we needed to get more grades involved, so every year was postponed. We asked the next grade behind us if they wanted to join us. We're very excited. We have two parent chaperones and three staff going. We have a very full itinerary. We're on the go from 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 or 10:00 at night. We're going to see many historical sites, obviously, and being in DC. One of the things I'm most excited about is at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, we have four of our students that can participate in the Laying of the Reeds ceremony. So we'll also be going to Mount Vernon, a few museums, many, many memorials, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at the time.
How many students do we have signed up?
29.
Okay.
And five chaperones.
And they're flying, right?
We are taking a coach bus, which is very exciting for some students who have never been on a coach bus. Another thing that throughout this whole process, Megan and I have told every student that's approached us that wanted to go that if they could not afford it, we would 100% help them fundraise for it. We have several students that are going solely on fundraising, and it's been, there's been tremendous support from the community, from family, from friends, and it's, it's just gonna be an exciting time.
Where can people donate if they want to for those students?
Oh, you can donate right to the high school and just put Washington DC trip in the memo. I don't know. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But I am looking for final approval because.
Don't drag it on. You can answer.
We worked so hard to get there, so.
Well, it's the first item of the new business, so I'm sure we'll get there. There's no questions? All right.
Thank you.
School committee reports?
That's next.
Okay. Financial reports.
I gotta get in here. We put, I'm gonna run the area.
The fiscal year 2022 budget update, which I think you already gave us.
Yep, I gave you that.
And then we have the warrants.
And there's a copy of the warrants in here. Most of the warrants are just payroll and some vendor warrants. I can tell you that we have just started drawing down many of the grants. Michelle learned how to do that today, so a lot of the grants are now being transferred into our funding. Look, excited she is over there.
I said, so don't get too far.
But it looks like.
It's not really her.
No, she's been doing a really good job. Really, the budget, I know some of you are interested in coming to look at it line by line, and I think we're, we're just about to that point where we can do that now that we started drawing down the, the grants, and it looks like, you know, like I think we finally, finally have a handle on it, so.
Yeah, and I think that's gonna be important for this committee.
For sure. Definitely for sure.
Before next month's meeting.
Yeah, so we can.
And then IMC is deposits.
Yep, and Megan put all the deposits in. You can see a lot of them are from the KMP and pre-burn and the preschool, so there's a total, a couple total deposits. We can give you what they are. We have $2,308 for miscellaneous deposit mostly for, for preschool athletics, student parking, and so that was about another two, that was $2,300. Another $5,000 for preschool and the after-school program, and so those are the vast majority of deposits we have coming in right now. And then some of the other things are vendor warrants that we're paying, paying some of the bills that we have, telephone, electric, things like that. Some of, a lot of it is custodial, custodial warrants.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Oh, shoot, where's my report? Where is my report?
You wanna read mine?
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, so thank you, I appreciate it. So on February 9th, the commissioner lifted the mask mandate for everybody, so we sent out a note to families and saying that beginning today, masks are no longer required. Very, very exciting about that. I'm going to kind of talk a little bit next. Yesterday, we got information from the CDC that we could lift the mask mandates in school buses, so that memo also went out to families. So we encourage families to, you know, do what's best for them. Certainly, we've had students today and staff today continuing to wear masks. We certainly will support you in both of those efforts, so we just want to make sure everybody's safe and, and feels comfortable. So please let us know if, if, you know, if you're not getting the services you need, whether you want to wear a mask or not, so that's something we'd like to do. We're continuing our bi-monthly COVID-at-home test for staff and families, and I can tell you that we have a lot of test kits, but they keep coming every week, so, so they keep going out, so we have a lot of them. But, so that, so Maureen and Jenna have been doing a great job getting them out to students and staff, and the students have been great taking them home. They haven't had any complaints, and if you're still interested in signing up to get free at-home COVID test, contact Maureen Floyd or Jenna until they have the elementary school, and to be happy to send you home with two test kits every week, every two weeks. I was so excited to participate in Camp Read Aloud on February 18th. I got to go to grades three, four, five, and six, and you can see there's a picture of the tent that I was supposed to put on the website, I did not, that I went to the third grade Mrs. Juritzma's class, and I did read aloud inside her tent. We read about the bear, so it was very, very, a ton of fun. I really enjoyed it. I really enjoyed it. So that was fun, doing activities like that. I continue to serve on the Southern Worcester County Strategic Planning Committee, which is the committee that we work with for our students with special needs, and our next meeting is tomorrow for that, and I am participating in helping them create a strategic plan. Again, on February 1st, the Quabog Regional School District and the North Brookfield School District applied for something called the Rural Innovation Efficiency Grids, and this grant will award each district $200,000 to develop programs, and that's something that, you know, we didn't, I didn't talk about much in the budget, so having this opportunity would create positions for a math coach and a reading coach that can help the district, so we're looking at that, and that grant would sustain at least three positions for, for three years. So that's what we're hoping to do, and if we get the grant. So Brett and I, we each get that, he's also gonna do the same thing, so really looking at literacy, and how can we support literacy through math and English, and that would be through hiring some coaches, yeah, the teachers. And then the next regionalization meeting is tomorrow at, it's a Zoom meeting. It's not at Quabog, it is a Zoom meeting.
Wednesday.
Oh, it's Wednesday the 2nd, yeah, tomorrow's the 1st. So Wednesday the 2nd, it is a Zoom meeting, and the meeting is posted at the town hall. And I also, I actually put it on our website so that you can sign in and join in as well. So I do post that. That's all I have. Thank you. Okay.
All right. Any questions to the superintendent? Move on to administrators' report, so we have, Tim, I think you're the first one on the list.
Sounds good. Thank you, Chairman. First off, I want to just commend Mrs. and Ms. Hansen for all their tremendous efforts in organizing the DC trip. I've been in contact with her throughout the process, and I know that she's planning a fantastic trip, so I'm very hopeful that the kids will have a great time. As Joe mentioned earlier, we had Unity Week the week before vacation. It was a success. I can't thank enough both STUCO and GSA for their collaboration in making this a very eventful program. I have to say that my six months or so at the school, our student council has been phenomenal, getting out of a pandemic, getting back to some normalcy. They have really been at the forefront of leading our school back to some, some good things for our students, but also some really interactive events for our students and faculty. So again, thank you to our STUCO and our E-Board. I want to congratulate both basketball teams who, last Friday, defeated Sizer School, both boys and girls. Our girls team qualified for the MIA State Tournament. They're playing tomorrow evening at Franklin Tech at 6:30, so congratulations to them. That is the second team now that's qualified for the state tournament. Our field hockey did in the fall, and now that girls basketball in the winter, so for, again, for a very small school, we've had some successes in our athletic program. So congratulations to our student athletes, our coaches, and everybody who's involved with those programs. Coming up next week, on March 8th, we have our career fair, which we've kind of resurrected from the ashes, if you will. We have over 12 participants coming, including Vibram, Flexicon, Polygographies, and Crowley Fuels, to name a few, and kind of one of the goals of this, this career fair is to have our students interact with these employers and find out what soft skills these employers are looking for. We've learned through a lot of research and kind of aligned with our college and career readiness programming that employers can train students in the hard skills, but they want to see, they want kids to come in and prepare with some of our, those soft skills, communication, collaboration. So our students are gonna be really engaging with these employers to see what they're looking for when they're hiring, so that's exciting for our students. And then on March 10th, I'm meeting with our seniors who are interested in our internship program. We are restarting our internship program for Q4, so those students who are looking to go out for an internship during quarter four, we'll be with myself and Ms. Sears to kind of go over that process and get those students hooked up with it, with an internship for the, the spring semester. Thank you.
And I guess you.
I'm next.
There's nobody else.
So, good evening. To start with personnel, we did have our speech language therapy assistant, Mackenzie Leonard, resign on February 11th, so there is a vacancy for that that has been posted both internally and, and externally, so if anyone knows anyone, please reach out. Otherwise, we have had a couple of parent workshops, and I'd really like to thank our school adjustment counselor at the elementary school, Stacy Matkovich, and our district's BCBA, Karen Allits, because they really worked together to put this on. It was on effective communication, and we did have a handful of parents attend. It was the week before school vacation week, I think it was February 15th and the 18th, and they really made sure to, you know, reach out to parents and guardians to see, you know, what they're interested in, what times of day that they would like to have workshops, and so they, you know, made sure to, to hear that, and they had one during the day and one after school as well. So there are plans for more parent workshops, so more to come on that. CPAC is also going to be hosting a, a parent workshop on March 7th, which is this coming Monday evening at 6:00 PM. It will be in person, but we also will have it on setup that parents, if they cannot attend in person for whatever reason, can access remotely through Google Meet as well. attend in person for whatever reason, can access remotely through Google Meet as well. And that will be facilitated by our school psychologist, Deborah Paulerson. She's going to be doing a presentation on reading and interpreting evaluations. So I'm looking forward to that presentation. I also had sent out a survey to parents and guardians a couple of weeks ago, just to help to understand how special education services, what families are feeling about the special education services being provided to their children. And so we did have a little over 20 families respond back. So the feedback is both positive with some critical feedback as well. So I hope to get more parents and guardians to continue to provide feedback. Along those lines, one of the things that I've learned through doing the tiered focus monitoring, which we are, which we were required to do this year through DESI, is that our district's programs, special education programs should be evaluated yearly. So essentially like an audit of our programs, just to make sure that, you know, we are, you know, taking a look at ourselves and what are areas that were really good, what are our strengths, and where are areas that we need to grow. And so the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative, SWECC, has agreed to help us to complete this program evaluation. And so they're going to be starting that in mid-March. I believe March 15th and 16th, they'll be coming out to observe our special education programs, the Connect and the Rise programs in both the elementary and the secondary buildings. And that will include observation as well as talking with the staff and also outreach to parents and guardians to get their input as well. So more to come on that, and I think that's about everything.
Great. Thank you.
I can be quick with these one for the elementary.
Actually, you had a couple of ones off from there, but go ahead.
Okay. Okay, do you have a question, Karen?
No, I had things I want to bring up, but feel free.
Oh, I just want to let you know that the elementary and the high school have been working on the multi-tier system of support, which is a team to look at supporting students in academics and behavior. So the reason I bring this up is because they're going to do a presentation for us for our, I think it's our April meeting, did we say?
Yes, April.
Yeah, April meeting, so they're going to show you that. And other than that, you know, kindergarten enrollment has begun, and then a couple of the things that I had mentioned, the Camp Read Aloud, and then they also have a spirit week in February. So that's your, that's the only reason I mentioned that.
Yeah, so the one I, the kindergarten enrollment, make sure that you understand that enrollment has started for 2022, 2023. Any enrollment packets are available in the main office. If you have any questions, please stop in and see them. I think it's important that, as the superintendent has just mentioned, they have a spirit week here, too. So February 14th, Valentine's Day was Wear Red and Pink. Tuesday was Formal Day, Wednesday was Sports Day, Thursday was PJs Day, and Friday was Camp Read Aloud that we've already heard about. So I think that those are all great things that we do with our students, and I think, you know, the town needs to be aware of that. The other thing that I wanted to make sure that we brought up was from the Buildings Facilities Department, and I know Mary Jane mentioned it, the superintendent mentioned just a little bit ago, that we had received three bids, and Peterson Oil came in as lowest bid for the oil, that's $2.90 per gallon. This price is approximately 74% increase over the current price of $1.69 per gallon, and that the school district uses approximately 70,000 gallons per year between the two schools. So when she talked about the increase because of, you know, the economy and everything else, that's kind of the things that we're dealing with. There's really not much you can do with the 74% increase. We cannot not heat the building, so that's really not an option, so.
One of those state mandates.
Well, you know, it's kind of a humanitarian thing. I mean, you kind of want our people to be nice and warm when they walk in the building. So just putting that out there so that the entire, you know, community, you have to understand, right? We're a community, so everybody has to understand what the challenges are that we're facing. And I know the town's going to face the same thing. They have to pay for the heat in their building, and that heat's going to go up as well and various other things. So as a community, we have to understand that. It's just, it is what it is at this point, so. Any other administrative reports that we need to? Moving on to old business, I see no old business. Onto new business, the Washington DC trip, April 19th through the 22nd of 2022.
I make a motion to accept the trip.
And do I have a second?
I second. We all second.
Are there any questions?
I just want to say one thing, and I'm glad that you're going, because my son was supposed to go the first time, and he was disappointed, and I could not be more excited for all of you to go. So somehow, please send us a postcard or some pictures or just have a wonderful time.
I'd really like to have the kids come in and kind of report. We'll probably get a few volunteers that will come in and tell us what was. So we'll come back.
I remember my seventh grade trip.
Yeah.
And some of the kids will never have an opportunity to do that ever again.
Right.
So I think it's awesome.
And I still have pictures from when I went down when I was in high school, so there's not a chance at all that you're not going to get my support on that. I think it was a great opportunity. Still one of the most favorite places I go, and I never head to that area without stopping into Arlington and watch changing of the guard. So I think it's one of the most fascinating things, not fascinating, but one of the most awe-inspiring things that you can actually stand there and watch. And so, anyway, any other questions?
I have one other thing.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if this is the right way to do this, but I think that, I know we've talked a lot about the numbers and the possibility of regionalization and why students are, you know, either choosing to leave the district or homeschool, whatever. And it was brought up speaking with somebody that we could have like a working meeting to come in and discuss and brainstorm ideas in a, maybe a more casual setting. I don't know if we need to vote on something like that, but I think it's important for us to come up with some sort of a plan moving forward, and I know Tim brought it up again, but what we do now, if it were to have a positive effect by October, it still goes to the following year in terms of budget. So anything that we do now that has an effect after October is actually the following, like two years from this October. So I think it's important for us to sit down and come up with some ideas and hopefully be able to present more than just the budget and actually have some sort of a plan on how we're going to improve. And I know if we regionalize anything that we start that's positive here would most likely carry over.
I think we can start by showing our commitment to cool school trips. Right? Okay. So, so we have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any other discussion about the motion to go to Washington?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we already did.
So I will go, so I will go back to your question in a minute.
I'd just like to say thank you for doing everything you do, and thank you to...
Oh, did you want to answer tonight?
Thank you to the chaperones as well. I know it's a big commitment, so.
Seriously, thank you for all the hard work.
I thought that was unanimous at this point.
All in favor?
I...
Close. Okay, so.
I want to see where you're going with it. Right?
Well, let's have a working meeting and discuss whether they should...
I get it now. Your comment makes sense to me.
You're going to make me have a heart attack. I don't understand. Okay, so the next item on new business is the school, the school calendar. Before we talk about the school calendar, and I will accept a motion to approve, but I do want to make sure that people are aware that there are four times in the school calendar where the meeting for the school committee has to be adjusted because schools either closed or because of the timing of the meeting normally would be. So I would ask that if you are so inclined, please, once the school calendar is approved, please check out the dates on the school's website. So can I have a motion to accept the calendar?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the school calendar.
In a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on the school calendar? Yes, sir, Joseph.
Can I get a copy of that?
No. Yes, you may. Is there any other discussion?
It's for next year.
Yeah.
No, he knows. Is there any other discussion?
I have just a question. Are all the PDD's half-days, are there any full days?
No, there's some full days. The ones that are in gray.
Oh, because I was looking on the back. I only saw...
Oh, yeah. August 29, 30, October 7th, January 17th, those are all full days.
Okay.
And then the yellow ones are half-days.
And how many by contract?
Four.
They have four.
Four full days and one, two, I think five half-days. One, two, three, four, five, six half-days.
By their contract?
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot of PDD. Okay, I'm just...
Yes, by contract, there.
No, that's just, PD can be very good.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the calendar? So the question was raised with regard to work sessions. We absolutely can. I would encourage you to reach out to myself and then Mary Jane, and we can, I don't think anybody on the committee would oppose getting together for a work session. It has to be posted, just like these meetings do. But I think if there was a session that we wanted to have with regard specifically, like you said, to encouraging more involvement in the school from our community, then I think we're all for it. So I think if you want to reach out to Mary Jane and start working on a schedule and an agenda, I think, I think, you know, as long as I don't, knowing the committee as I do, I think as long as we can all make it work for a date that we can get together, we'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else on the new business?
No, I would appreciate that working committee.
I, yeah, they have a tendency to be very, very helpful, because again, it is a much less formal.
Yeah.
There's no, you know, there's a topic on the conversation, on the floor, and we're just talking about how we're going to rectify it. And I know that that's frustrating sometimes, but this formal kind of meeting doesn't really lend to that, so.
Well, it opens it up to homeschool people, maybe families that might want to come in and contribute to the conversation, private school.
Yeah, it's open to the public. It's not necessarily, again, so I want to be very clear, it's not, again, necessarily a meeting of the public for, with the school committee. It's a meeting of the school committee in public. But we could, from that, set up a meeting where we could just open a meeting for the public to come in and have a conversation with the school committee. So I think that the work session, in order to be very viable, needs to be a meeting of the school committee. But there is an opportunity, as there is in this meeting, under the guise of what we've put in place for rules, to come in and have a conversation or state your piece with the school committee. But then, once the work session is over, we could absolutely, anytime, for any purpose, schedule a meeting to have a meeting, a public meeting for the public to address the things that are going on with the school committee. That's up to the, to the board that's here currently today, so I'm all for that, anytime. If there's no other business to come before the school committee, can I have a motion to adjourn into executive session for the discussion with regard to strategy in respect of collective bargaining or litigation or open meeting that may deter, deter, have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation posts, positions if the public body and the chair so declares? Can I have a motion? So to go into executive session for purposes of negotiations?
I'll make a motion to go, to enter into an executive session for purposes of negotiations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
This is a roll call vote for Mr. Hannah.
Aye.
Mr. Graham.
Aye.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Al, yes. We will go into executive session. We will come back from executive session to public session for simply the adjournment of the public meeting. At this point, we're in the executive session.